Because I'm not responsible for the agenda. As far as I'm aware, and I've got no reason to believe otherwise, no councillor has brought an agenda paper to council to discuss it. Now, if any councillor here has brought a paper, an agenda paper to council, I'd be very interested to hear.
But don't you think as chairman, leader of the council supposedly?
No, I'm not the leader of the council. No, I'm sorry, you're getting mixed up between a county council and a town council. A town council does not have a leader. Yes, and at council meetings, the only additional vote I have at a council meeting is if it's a tied vote, I have a pass on the vote.
Where do you think your positive action comes from? Do you never have any positive thoughts or ideas for the future? Or you're just reacting all the time?
I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm just being attacked all around at the moment. You, I understand a number of you are not happy with what the county council proposed with their one-way system. Let me finish, please. Then, but the county council have set up a task and finish working group to look into that, of which the town council represented, the neighbourhood plan steering group represented, and other groups are represented on. That is for them to debate and decide what to do. It is not, it is, it is a county council issue, and the council is not, is not a pressure group. I'm sure that if we had a straw poll, straw poll of councillors, some would be in favour of a one-way system, some would be in favour of a two-way system, and so on.
It's not what we're talking about. The lady said just before that it's about a lick of paint and it's about pavements that we can walk on and it's about being able to feel once more proud about living in Oakland.
County council.
It's very herring to talk about the one way to go. And if you sit there and say that it's a rotten county council issue to talk about the centre of Oakland, then there's something very fundamentally wrong, isn't it? What is your role then? What is the role? Would you like to tell us what the role of the town council is, apart from deciding to have party meetings?
I'll give you a transcript of what I read out initially, if you like, because that is what the town council is responsible for.
I would like the town council to take pride in the town, and that's always been the issue, and that's why I get trouble. When we destroyed these lovely Victorian houses in Dale Street when I first moved here, I got a response from a person who doesn't work anymore. What's it got to do with Oakland Town Council? And that is the problem. There is no pride, and I don't need it personally to members. We've had an issue for a long time, but we don't seem to have an aim as a council. All we do is fight, and we're not looking after it now.
I think it's the goal of the town council to provide, provide focus for what the people of Oakland require.
Well, we're governed by standards.
How do you represent the people of Oakland? How do you, how do you take, how do you reach the people of Oakland to ask them what their views are? Or do you simply sit there and represent your own views?
I don't, I don't, I don't think I've actually expressed any views.
And you're simply saying, oh, we just have to keep halfway clean and put, and play the lighting. You're not there just for that. You're there to lead Oakland Town in the direction that it wishes it was.
Well, if I go back, if I go back to the neighbourhood plan survey, about 3,000 people responded to that, and that involved questions on the town centre. And that will be taken into consideration by the neighbourhood plan steering group and then by the town council when it comes back.
But the issue surely is that the town council, you, that Oakland Town should be leading the town council, should be taking a much more proactive role with you. Yes, we elect you allegedly to represent us, and you're not listening to us.
I am, oh, I am listening. I think, I think you're possibly confusing listening with acquiescence.
I, I'm expecting everything.
We are, we are all entitled by our views on how the town should be done.
To not even discuss it is shameful to hear.
Can I ask, have we actually got the grants for the cost? Because it's cost thousands of pounds for this neighbourhood plan. And we, we don't seem to be getting grants as opposed to having. And I can't get that answer from the council because I'm not allowed to talk for a grant. So have we actually funded off the £9,000? Because that's another issue. This is cost probably nearly £20,000.
Oh, right. No, it has to be.
Your funding started two years ago, and by now, most councils have done their draft. Two years, and we've achieved nothing. You don't even give us proper reports at council. And you are our representative, who won't allow any other representative when the protocol says there should be two. So what is going on with the neighbourhood plan?
Well, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just, I'm not prepared at all.
Because I'm asking, and that's the problem. But I represent Oakland South East ward with two other people. Now, one man couldn't be here tonight, and he would have asked the same questions because he's worked in London. Now, you know, this is what this meeting's called to.
Are there any, are there any other questions?
Well, I don't feel that you're not.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Tim Tuck, if I may just shift the emphasis slightly. You did mention in your introductory remarks that you are a statutory council team for the planning applications relating to the town that were received by the county council. And you will therefore receive the weekly planning lists. What I would very much like to know is what notice this council takes of those lists? What expressions of opinion it returns to the county council? I know you don't have a statutory power, but you do have the power to respond. And I have particularly in mind, and there's something being referred to, alluded to already this evening, is the character of the town, the planning of the town, the historic nature of the town. And I have in mind one particular application, which was that for the former Rutland Times building in South Street, which is a historic building, which you will all know. That has been passed. The comment from the town council for that application was, we have no time to make. It fell to others to make representations, objecting to the quite inappropriate development of that site, the overdevelopment, the under-provisioned apartment, the totally unacceptable fenestration that was to be introduced, which thankfully has been amended, to be investigating the archaeology of the site because this is very critical to the historic development of the town, and so on and so forth. No comment. Why not?
Well, unfortunately, unfortunately, the chairman of the stuffy, the planning committee can't be, he's not here this evening, he can't be here, but the vice-chairman is. Perhaps Mrs. Lucas, who is vice-chairman of the planning committee? We don't like to make this.
It's out of my hands, chairman. You know very well, it goes to the plaque, and that's what she puts. We have a great discussion of planning, not only about buildings, but about trees, and they get thrown out time and time again. And I try my best. I can't do any more.
Michael, as a member of the planning committee, I wasn't actually, I was at work when they obviously did that. But we have improved. It doesn't say much on that with the planning things because there was a time when this council, I found out by accident by looking at comments on the county council's website, where it was basically, we'd sit there and we'd say, we don't like this, or a resident has told us this, and it would just go in yes or no. And we're not, but it is, it has improved, and I did keep an eye on it, but it's still not perfect. But the other issue why we're here is a lot of people come to me, and I don't want to upset people, but after an event, and like the one-way system, everyone came to me after the event and said, what are you doing about it, Martin? Maybe came to me beforehand. So it is raining.
Yeah, I knew you wanted to come in.
You had to speak to us. Can I say something? I'm a member of the planning committee, I don't recollect this on the phone, but we never say no comment. We actually study and discuss a lot, and we never put no comment. So that must have been a very long meeting. Either more than a year ago, or I wasn't at that meeting because we always look into anybody, the neighbours that have said anything. We listen to the tree woman's comments on the trees because she's a whiz person at that. And we look at everything we can, but ours isn't the final say. We take the recommendations that we may go to the Rockland, and they then have free rein on that. But I've never known us to put no comment.
Chairman, if I could respond to that. I have read all the comments that were submitted in relation to that planning application we reflected last year, and there was no comment at all from Oakland Town Council on that. It was left to the local history and record society. Yes, it was left to the Leicestershire Heritage Environment Record, who do this kind of thing as a project with the county council. It was left to a number of local residents, all of whom objected, and not we all know, to that application. The, as I say, from Oakland Town Council, there was no comment at all.
But that's when it was.
I can't remember exactly, it was March of 2017.
No, no, wait, wait. It was. Mr. Chairman.
I think, I think. Did you want to come?
Well, it was slightly different, but we had no idea. But we were making that.
Just a minute, don't let her respect you. Do you want me to miss please?
We have no idea.
Give me your name, please.
It was a question to find out, my name's Julian Lawrence.
Thank you.
We had no idea in our household that there was anything being discovered about whether we wanted one way or other. But we knew nothing about it, and it was very complex as far as we have. And I think a lot of people we talked to had exactly the same opinion. They weren't, it wasn't up their size. We knew nothing about it to lose. We were confused.
Can I, can I say something? Because I wasn't on the council at the time. But I don't think the questions were directly asked because there's a way to answer them, to write the question so you get the answer that you want. And I personally don't think that those questions were asked in an open way.
Depends how much you pay the payers.
Just a moment, please. I've got one council, the council down in New York. And this is what I'm going to say. I think it's fair for the chairmen, that really we, last year, we did look at the way the council is structured, and we, we, members were happy. We have now altered it here, so it's, I mean, just a small planning committee. We are not going to have a proper planning in general, but we can, we can deal with lots more issues. But that will involve all members of the council, not just a few. So hopefully, because it's going to be a proper committee, we will get minutes back, and we'll be able to see what our comments are going forward from that, the application. And I'm interested as well, the public are saying that, you know, really, as a council, we've not given a definitive answer on the one-way system, for instance. And I do think it's probably a little bit remiss of us not to have done that, although we have got the neighbourhood plan. And perhaps that's something that we ought to look at in the next coming year, fairly quickly. And we can put a bake it together, we can bring it to council. We will, we will take on board the comments you're making, and you'll obviously be able to make representation at the meeting. And then we probably give our definitive view on the one-way system. Because, I mean, I come from a town in Stipend, where we put, I was on the council, we put a one-way system in there, but that worked because of the way it flowed. The way I understand this is going to flow, we're going to use a smaller street, you know.
Can I just say, I don't think it works. South Street, so you close for days, you know, in the morning. And that has to be put off until the high street is finished because they couldn't do it while the high street is one-way.
So I think, I think there are issues, which probably as a council, we do, we do need to look at. But we have restructured, and we are, we are, all the time, and Michael has been pushing this forward, we're trying to improve the way that we are run as an authority, and we are trying to be more businesslike. But we can't, we can't really improve until tomorrow, and after the whole new, the new structure starts tomorrow.
Culturely, can I ask, we have twelve town councils in Oakland. How do our councillors reach out to the people in the residences to ask?
Sorry, I can't, I'm sorry, I can't hear what you're saying, sorry.
How do you consult with you, are you elected? Everybody said four years.
Let me, let me answer that. Next, next.
What means do you have to be elected to find out what their views are?
May of next year, there will be both county and town council elections. That will give everybody.
That wasn't really.
That's not the question. About one seventy-four years, not into a mandate for standing up for us when a new issue arises. How do you reach out to your electorate?
Sorry, I want to say.
We have our own website, and every, every town councillor's name, address, telephone number is on there, and their email, as we have, because our house is emailed. Members hold surgeries in the house, member?
Member, and I've been told I can't do it anymore in my home.
Well, you might as well carry on.
Generally, talking to people, picking up the vibe, because you can't ask everybody every, no time.
A lot relates to the one way, isn't it?
But that's why they make it online, generally, on the website. And if you want to make a deposition, you want your lawyer.
Are you all aware that the county council no longer have a conservation officer? That checks up on all our, the higher number of council? They don't have one. And I would have thought this was, as we have a number of listed buildings in our town. Twenty-eight, thank you. That it would be very important that we have a conservation officer.
Is that a county facility?
Yes, that is the right word. But when you added up all the villages listed, it was great. But did the town council put any comment in to say that they thought it was a deficit move?
I think we did. We, we, we were approached by one of the villagers. And this time, we did actually discuss it, and we supported the villagers.
Sorry, I can't hear, sorry.
I know, I can't either. I thought that the county council appointed a new conservation officer a year, no, just before Christmas, a new one.
No, no, no.
That's a young person, what else is on there? But he actually paid, he worked through Peterborough.
Yes.
But that might not be the case, from what I've heard.
Yes, we share with Peterborough, and we get about a half a day a week or less, and it's not enough. It's been raised at the parish council forum, which is where members can meet with the management at the county council, and pretty well all the villagers were up in arms about this, but it's a budget issue.
So it's a part of them?
Yes, exactly.
Can I just respond to that as well? I'm not representing the local history and record society here tonight, but that society has expressed its grave concern about that matter. And if the town council were to wish to take that up, and perhaps the new council, you know, at its meeting tomorrow, it might be something that could make its way onto the agenda. This council might express its grave concern of lack of conservation officer facilities for Rockland and for the town. And I think also, it's important, this is a national trend, it's important to remember that there are no well-being, new planning regulations coming into force, which make it unnecessary for people wishing to make operations to listed buildings to submit a separate listed building application. And that is a very risky situation. It's more than we can press for, for this to be done half a day a week is, is not.
We did, we did actually support the Rockland.
Talking about planning, can you clarify first what the planning committee's role is when it comes to new development sites?
I was talking about the town council and the county council.
Well, I know what you did with the county council, but you've just been talking about planning committees looking at submissions. Can you explain then what the role is for the planning committees when it comes to proposing new sites?
Yeah, the, the, the.
And you say you needed an answer.
Yeah, the, the town council, the town council does receive planning applications from the county council, and the town council is invited to comment on them, or consulted. Now, what the, the county council are under no legal obligation to take what we say into consideration. That, that, that's, hopefully they do do, but they don't legally have to. We have no statutory powers. So they would, they would ask us, we're consulted, the planning committee will debate it, that will go back to county council as a response from the town council, then it's up to the planning committee. The RCC planners, either their planning committee or their planning officers, if it's been delegated to them, to make, to make a decision.
When we do put, as a member of the planning committee.
I have a question. If you have a neighbourhood which is very unhappy about new buildings, new builds particularly, going to happen, should that group of people, rather than go straight to the county council, make you aware of how unhappy and reasons they are unhappy to you? So you could take that view to the county council?
Well, that, yeah, I mean, it would certainly be helpful for the town's planning committee to have the views of residents for any new planning application. Let me just make, make one point, though. The planning, county planning committee planning officers have to work within the planning regulations. For, for instance, no one's got a right to review. So if you had a field next to you at the bottom of your garden, and the council, or they decided, build up, put in the planning, put in the planning application in, and your objection was, well, it will spoil my, my view, that is a consideration that the county planners cannot take.
But if it's going to affect how many houses will happen? Well, can I, can I do that?
You see, in, in, in defence of, in defence of the county planners, if they were to make a judgment which was outside of planning regulations, the developer would simply take that to, take that to appeal, and, and.
Can I respond?
Yeah, Peter's got a lot more experience of planning from the county point of view than I've got, so I'll let him do a response, please.
Yes, I think, as, if I understand the question correctly, the concern is about the new sites for consideration for future building. And we are in a position that, there was a call a year or two ago for these sites. They are all listed, and they're now getting a sort of pecking order. So I think that this, this is where the local public get involved. As far as we're concerned, it's a tandem thing, really. There's a local plan being developed by the county council, and we've got our neighbourhood plan. And so they, they are, they can come up with different answers. And we, we will have to see in due, due course. But I think if local people feel strongly about this, obviously, they need to do everything they can to set up groups to make it known to both us and, and the county council. At the end of the day, I think the county council will prevail. But if we have our own neighbourhood plan, it will have some power. I did sit on the Uppingham Town Council, and we were told when we set ours up that it would be above the county council, but that hasn't proved to be the case. It's still the county that prevails.
Well, you'll certainly come and make representations at town council because we represent the South and West action group, which campaigns against building on the road side. Nothing to do with views, but because of the impact that it would have in terms of traffic, which is already involved. Now, I'm not going to stand here and preach about that, and all that, but what I want to understand is really, again, it's about where the leadership is in terms of the vision from town council. Enough is enough. We have horrendous traffic jams down there. We know that the barriers are down 20 minutes within every hour at the moment. They're set to go up to 15 minutes within the next few years. Those are massive issues, and unless the town council are ready to address this, we are going to have another horrendous situation. 139 houses have been built there, with cars that go with executive homes. They're not so flouncy, they are executive homes, probably three houses, three cars per house. So it's that kind of vision, where when that comes to planning, town council needs strongly to say, this is not acceptable because we already have those issues going up the road, going up the road drive, going down the road drive, and a gridlock at the best of times. So it's that kind of not waiting to happen, but seizing this and saying, no, enough is enough. And if the, the town council feels that the pressure group is a small group of noisy people, which is an expression I've heard about the one-way system opposition, then maybe the town council needs to go out and do its own research amongst residents to confirm what feeling of residence in an area is.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not aware of that town council having any view on, of, of any view on the residents association, or anybody else in the town.
One of the things, can I just mention, because of the planning thing? If people like now are telling those things, that's great. But one of the things you have to remember is, which I've learnt on committees, that we're restricted by a lot of laws now. One of the things people come to me, each via social media and things, and emails, is we have too many of this shop, too many of that shop. So when they, when they, I'm saying how, how important it is to get it right. Because I objected as a councillor to a new opticians being converted in Church Street. And then I was told by the planning officers, no, you can't object to it because of European law. So we've got, if you want the council to support anything, you need to know that we can. And I would certainly support people.
Crazy, you see.
Sorry?
Crazy, you see.
Yeah. It was competition laws that I was in breach of, by saying that.
Oh, sorry.
Chris Moore, Oakley Wood. I'd like to thank the Oakley Wood. And I'd like to thank Oakland Town Council very much for the year in display with your hanging baskets that are all around the town. Our displays certainly bring in the tourists. Tourists don't come to Oakland to look at tarmac and campers' labs. They come to see the flowers, the history, the whole ambience of an ancient medieval town. But the colour scheme this year is white, depicting the end, the peace after World War One. And we're hopeful that Oakland Town Council can come out at the Oakland in Blue theme with their hanging baskets in the coming year.
Can I just say, it's, it is a very important partnership that Oakland Town Council have with Oakland in Blue. Otherwise, it will not work. It's just got to be a volunteer authority to get the, get the best awards. So I also would like to reiterate what Chris has just said. Without Oakland Town Council's hanging baskets and managers, this town would look a bit drab.
Can I just, as a councillor, thank Oakland in Blue for what they do? Because I was appalled one year, and I don't give, I don't actually like gardening, but one year I did help with some weeding. But I was appalled to see Chris and his wife on their knees at the church passage in the hot weather a couple of years ago. And I think it goes unnoticed, I just like to thank the few volunteers that tried their hardest to make our town look nice.
Following on from that, can I just ask you to confirm that you are going to continue to provide those lamppost baskets? Because there have been mutterings that it's likely to stop.
No, there, there is, I can't, I can't say what will happen in future years because that's for council to resolve, but this, this, I can confirm that this year they will be in place, essentially.
Thank you very much, because I'm a recipient. And I show up at Oakland Town Council's floral display, and my building looks lovely, right? Thank you very much.
This lady has been responding to what I was going to say. Now, I was going to go back, I was going to go back to what you were saying. And I'm appalled that the site at this side of the railway crossing Oakley Road is going to have houses built on that.
Has it been confirmed?
Well, that's as far as I know. Now, if that comes onto that road, that road is a death, absolute death. You cannot see from the city town round that corner, it's the only way it's coming, and it will be a nightmare. But also, they have. But also, they have pulled down two houses on the beginning of Brook Road, and I think it's about eighteen or something, eighteen that they're going to build, and that road is awful, and I understand, somebody told me this weekend, that somebody was actually trapped in the railway, and they're very lucky that they stopped the train in time, it's getting beyond a joke, it's with the wrong side of the railway line, and I actually try to speak to as many people as I can in the area, because I live in the area that I represent, sorry.
Thank you very much, and that's why I wanted to ask you, why, when I came to your doorstep last October, to try and get support for people to be quite clear that you did not want these houses, you said you haven't got a cutting-edge chance of getting them in the bill, so why would you say that?
I didn't say that, sure. That's not an expression I use.
Do you know what I want to say? I can tell you, you said that, because I wouldn't be sitting here lying to you, what you went on to say to me was, you only possibly got a chance to influence slightly what the houses might look like.
That is correct, yeah. You can make representations of county council, all I'm trying to say, in the defence of their planning department, they have to work within planning laws, whether they like it or not, they have no choice, so I'm not defending your argument or reason, I'm just explaining, that's the way, that's the way they work.
That's nothing to do with us. I'm saying, why did you say to me that we haven't got a cutting-edge chance?
Well, I didn't say that, because that's not, sorry, that's not language that I use, I completely refute that comment, I'm sorry. But what I explain to anybody is that the planning department has to work within planning laws.
We've been working with them for the last eighteen months, you know, they know exactly.
But it's their decision, it's not their decision.
But you're supposed to be the leader of this council, who is representing us and putting a point of view, and you're just saying, oh, we can't put a point of view, and I know that you've got no statutory power, but you have a point of view to put to the county council, and you're saying, oh no, we can't put that point of view, so what is the point of you being here?
Because you're expressing your point of view, there are other people in Oakham that would have a different point of view.
Yes, so why are you not expressing any point of view?
I'm not, I have sat all evening, actually haven't expressed any point of view.
If you give your views to us as members with the new committee, we will listen to it, and it will be from May, isn't it, where we will probably get that planning application, and we will put it, you will have a chance to come and give a declaration when it comes there, but I understand what you're saying, we need as council to be more involved with it, but, you know, so I've.
The only positive thing I can see about those houses that have gone up the Brook Road is at least they all have two parking places off the road for cars. The development that went through with no comment from the town council in South Street is for six properties with only parking, two of them, three of them, three-bedroom properties, and three of them smaller, with parking for only four of those properties in South Street, where there is no parking other than, no limited residence parking, which you have to pay for, and the developer had highlighted two parking spaces on the street, and these were these plaques, and you said, oh, you might make those, that's the road, you'll have to pay forty pounds a year for a sixty percent chance of maybe finding a space, and let the town council pass it with no bet.
I must say, as a local resident, it's the first time I've been to one of these meetings, and I've never known a chairman so totally disinterested, sat there looking bored out of his brain, as what anyone has to say. Why are you the leader of this local council? All you ever, all you've said so far is, I can't comment on that, I'm not interested in that, I don't really want to be here, and I've never known, you don't get any control this meeting, it's a job to hear you speak, and I just find it.
No, I'm sorry you disappointed, let me respond, as you're. Let me respond to that, I am taking, if you don't know, I'm not going to agree or disagree with your views on the town council, I've listened, and my debity has been taken copious note. I'm not going, if you want me to provide support for one-way system or anything else, I'm sitting here now listening to what you're saying, I'm not bored out of my mind, as you say, I'm listening to what you're saying, but I am not prepared to express an opinion, I'm sitting here listening, why?
Why am I not prepared to express an opinion? You are the chair.
Because I'm the chair of the council, not the council, and the way democracy works in this country with the council, then anything that comes to council is debated, and then it is voted on, when it is voted on, it's by a majority vote. As I said before, the only powers, if you like, for a little better word, that I have is if it's a split vote, I would have a casting vote. Council, which is now made out of twelve members, decide how the council will respond, and it will work, not the chairman, not any individual council, it is by a majority decision. I am one person, and I'm not prepared to sit here and give a council view when I don't know, because the council has a debating issue, what the council may think.
As the local council, you clearly don't have any view on anything.
Oh, I do have lots of views, I'm just.
Well, when people address you and ask a question, rather than say, I don't know, I can't really be bothered, the county council aren't even listening to us, why don't you actually man up and actually say, I'm going to lead this local council, and I'm going to make the views of the people that live in this town and pay the rates?
Quite simply, because I do not have any mandates within the Localism Act to do that, I'm not the leader, I am the current leader chairman, I chair the council, I do not lead the council.
Listen to what people have to say and say, I will represent you properly at council, rather than they won't listen to me, which is basically what they're saying.
I've sat there all evening, listening to what people have said.
Yeah, listening with that head in your hands, looking bored out of your brain.
I'm sorry for the way you put it, I can understand your frustration that I'm not agreeing or disagreeing with anything anybody's said, but that's the way the meeting is.
Can I suggest that some of these residents actually turn up and listen to our council meeting? That would be quite handy.
God, help me.
Joy has been.
Yes, we have been.
Yeah, Joy, and this gentleman who's now town councillor, they've all sat and listened to us, and remain truly.
I'm going to make a good suggestion, next year, there's an election, now most of us, if not all of us, are unopposed, and that's how it's always been.
No, no, it's not.
No, it has for a long time.
Now, I've fought two elections, and I've been top of the class.
The last two, I'm talking about the last eight years, it's been, it's most people. I just find that comment extraordinary, how can one person stop anybody who's interested?
Well, I think we're now moving, again, we're moving away from the whole purpose of this meeting, let's just remind it, we're here to listen, we are here to listen to what you want to say about anything to do with Oakham, okay? And we are listening, but as I say, if you're disappointed that I'm not prepared to personally comment, I'm afraid.
As the leader of the chair of the council, do you not know what your councillors' views are on the one-way system, where you're saying you can't have, it's not your opinion, you say you represent the council, so have you not asked them?
It has not come to council for debate, the only, the information that we.
They have said that they tried to raise it, and they think, no, they think.
Well, I don't, I'm not aware of any, I certainly don't, because I'm not.
We've heard the people saying that they have raised it.
Well, I have, I have no powers to say what can or cannot go onto a council meeting agenda.
Right, you do.
I do not, councillor Brooks.
You do, Mr.
Councillor Brooks, I do.
There are things where it's been blocked, every agenda item, I try and break it.
Are you able to counter the raising?
Am I? Any councillor can request an agenda item from the clerk.
Including you?
Including me, yes.
So can I ask why you haven't done it?
Why haven't done what?
Any other representations about the one-way system?
Because I've relied on the neighbourhood plan steering drip survey, which three thousand people responded to.
To be honest, too late.
The survey was done last year.
I'd like to bring up something completely horrible. We had a town clerk for years who had been part of the Brooklyn County Council, district at one stage, county council at one time, and that town clerk seemed to have his finger on the button. Now, I appreciate, and it is pointless me going over a gentleman and his illness, but did you not think it was more important to have a fully qualified town clerk than have Alison, who with the best will in the world, was a secretary, made up to it? And I think this has been falsely commented.
I must stop you there, you are debating staffing issues, which I can't accept as outside of this meeting.
Could you read that again, Chairman, that offending the paragraph?
Can I read what?
The offending paragraph, which prevents my colleague here from.
Yes, we're discussing, we are not, we are not here to discuss staff issues.
Is that specifically said?
But the confusion I get is that the clerk is holding a position of public.
We're not, well, I've already read out what the National Association of Local Councils solicitors have written to me, say, I'm not a solicitor, that's why I read out what they've said, and I'm taking that advice.
So the locals, us locals, have no control over the fact that we have a second rate, in my opinion, a second rate town clerk?
You are entitled to your views, but I'm not prepared to respond to that actually. That is not something which in this meeting must be debated.
Peter?
Yes, may I just say a big thank you to the Oakham Town Council for cuts close? I walked through it last day, it's been wonderful, and I wonder why the green flag isn't there? Was it the green flag?
Why is it not up? Because councilors have not to spend the money on renewing it.
It was there last year, wasn't it?
Yeah, it cost three hundred and fifty pounds a year to enter, but we haven't followed, we don't get the reports from the clerk, and most of the time, the recommendations weren't followed up, simple things like removing the signs and putting braille and making them look more upright, so we felt as members that we didn't want to continue, it was like no other year.
Is no longer a green flag parked?
No, it doesn't mean anything, it's just to get, as it does if you did the publicity right, like Rudden Water got it last year, and they were all over the papers, but Oakham Town Council wasn't.
It was, I was, I was glad, I'm sorry.
It went on our website.
And it was you wanting to.
Okay, let's, it's not too much.
No, it was unanimous, when you were away, councillor.
Let's stick to what we should be doing, please, if there's anything else that we wish to raise.
Chairman, can I ask what are your personal plans for the next year, as far as chairman is concerned?
I won't be chairman next year.
What would you like to see your successor achieve?
That's for council beside, not for me.
Oh dear, no thoughts at all?
Oh, lots of, it's, I'm not going to be drawn into that, this is for council to resolve, not for me, it's not my position, I am one councillor, and I will have my vote, as would all other councillors.
Sorry, we're running the, what's that paper, so, so, it wasn't the view of the Atlantic.
Council must determine what it wants to achieve next year.
I have a question about the street lighting costs, I have some electrical consultants, and he's spoken to me how the council gets charged for the street lights, and you don't actually pay the actual cost, you pay what from the supplier, and as you've got all these new low-energy bulbs, I assume the cost is going down every year, is that right?
The contracts is between the county council and the energy suppliers, we're not involved within that contract.
If you're paying the energy, the cost should be going down every year.
It did, it went down significantly, that's the only reason we took it on, because it was like, I think it's right to say, it was unmeted or unmuted for some reason, but now it's gone down to, I wish we paid about eleven thousand a year, but we were talking nearly a hundred thousand before.
We, until this last year, we've been one of the few, according to Brooklyn County Council, we were one of the few parish or town councils that were not paying or contributing to or paying for the unmeted energy. I was involved directly in the negotiations, I was a council representative to negotiate with them, and I managed to negotiate that they would, if we paid for the unmeted energy, they would replace the inefficient older lighting units, which was most of them, with up-to-date LED units, and they would continue to maintain them. If the town council had decided not to pay for the energy, which the town council could have voted not to be so desired, the county council made it clear that they would not be maintaining the lights, and as they failed, they would just fail, and progressively, the amount of community lighting would reduce as they failed.
I think, yeah, just checking that it's going down every year, and if any issue wants to get replaced, the cost should be going down every year?
Can the council negotiate the contracts with the suppliers, with the energy companies? I am not privy to the.
They're replacing them all now.
If you're paying, if you're paying the energy, the price should be going down every year.
Yeah, well, it's unmeted, so they agree a contract with them, it's not meted, it's unmeted energy, so they agree, they agree a price per unit as part of their contract, but I do not, I'm not privy to that contract, I don't know what the details are.
Can I ask, Chairman, we would all commend the use of much more efficient lighting, but with heat bulbs and stuff, the problem is, that the result is that they are less effective, and you get pools of darkness in between the lights, they may cost a lot less to run, they may be a lot more efficient in that respect, but they don't meet anywhere near such a good or secure level of lighting in the streets, it really should be reviewed to reassess the placing of the understanding or positioning of the lights.
One last thing, because I was thinking, so there's, I think you ought to recommend Joy Clough, who's very modest, but an absolute powerhouse, now Joy's representing Oakham Residents Group, and there are already more than six hundred people signed up, and I think all the councillors here are just looking for a path to Joy's door, because Joy has such a strong image of how Oakham could really cheaply and effectively without spending masses, and has galvanized so many people, got so much support, and we have, through the residents group, an immense amount of potential, resource, expertise, support, and urge all the town council, and whoever the new chairman is from tomorrow, to really meet Joy immediately, because she's been so effective, and he is on the task and finish group, which I don't certainly think you'll be aware of, and he's said a few groups, and obviously don't seem to recognise the importance of the residents group on the task and finish, which had to be brought to them there, and Joy is amazing there in front of the county councils, so I think we should absolutely thank and congratulate Joy, and I think every councillor in this room should talk to Joy very well.
And I think every council in this room should talk to Joy greatly.
And can we say our own town council?
Okay, anything else? In which case, thank you all for your time and interest. And I declare the meeting.
Chairman, what happens to the...
Well, they get produced, we do a draft. They'll be drafted in a minute. I mean, normally they just...
Nothing happens till the next year.
They're full of way of the box.
Well, they come back, they come back. It does mean we have lost count of ourselves. Would you accept the ruling that...
Do you want to chant that? Do you want to chant about it? Paul, that's right. Turn the dog.